Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and in thy name. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America. The main reason for this meeting today is we have to redo our bond resolution on the sewer plant because of deciding to upgrade all the diffusers down there and make it. And I do have three or four other short items I hope I'd like to address also.
Line number 2 here first, go.
Yep. So first on is I'd like approval of the May 18 regular board meeting minutes.
Motion to approve that meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I understand I wasn't here. All right, we'll move down to...
We need to excuse Danny, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Phase two wastewater treatment plant, third amended reinstated bond resolution. Does anybody have a copy of that? Basically, they were amended the bond resolution in the amount of fourteen million, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, three hundred and eleven dollars. Anybody got any questions on that and why we're doing it or anything?
Four minute after the, that was the total, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a new total.
New total.
Fourteen million, nine hundred and twenty-six.
Is that because of increasing costs or stuff or?
Well, that's because of originally... Deciding to replace all the diffusers and aeration, the rest before it was only partial. Now it's, that's what we just got bits back on and...
Originally, we thought that they were all going to be replaced in the original contract, but as we looked at the contract documents, it wasn't. So it'd be beneficial for us to replace them all now while we're redoing everything.
Well, we're into the project.
And you have them all the same, right?
Correct. They'll be all the same, all brand new.
What's the lifespan on these things?
None of them.
Are they on the die?
Well, the ones that we have in there, we've replaced a few, correct, Joe? But what's, what's the lifespan of them? I'm not really sure.
I'm not sure either.
I would say Colin.
Yeah. I would say someone's replacing them.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we amend the bond resolution to that figure of fourteen million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eleven.
I will second then. Okay. That, we have to do a roll call vote. Myself, yes. Tim Woodrick?
Yes.
Ed Murphy?
Yes.
Charles Kriely?
Yes.
Good on that. All right, I want to bring summer rack up again because I have got nothing back from the county. I sent them another email Monday explaining what the new costs were and how many children. And since 2017, we've averaged probably fifty children from outside the town or village of Laubel each year. And I sent that out Monday morning. I've heard nothing back. I called Dick Sharper, which is one of the legislators, yesterday morning. He hasn't got back to me. I did find out last, the town does not want to split anything at all this year. They want to stick strictly at their thirty percent and no more. Turns out, I guess, we were lucky, Randy, last year basically took it on his own that we would split that difference. His board, according to Bob, knew nothing of it. And they don't, they don't want to split anything and they don't want to make any changes. Their philosophy is if the county doesn't come up with any extra money, which Bob's talked to, he's got a call in to Dick himself, and he's also talked with Josh Livercar a little on it, that they figure we just take the summer off and figure out how we're going to fund this down the road. And not have a... Because if you look back at where some of these people are coming from too, it's almost like we're providing free babysitting. Believe it or not, there's been people from Boonville, Carthage, Lorraine, Fort Lyden, Lion Falls, according to Double Play's report that they give us.
We've, we've got to figure something out. I mean, obviously, we can't keep going on with those expenses. How, and I know even not, the last time I talked to Dan, that day, he just talked to you on it. But is there just, if we're talking of either having to slash or cut the program, would it be beneficial and hey, invite the county, and if they don't want us to take it, well then that's up to them, but just have a meeting in the mind with all interesting, interested parties and that way we're not... I understand we have to make a decision. And I understand our hands might be tied if nobody else comes to play ball with us. But...
Well, the thing is, the thing is, I knew this was going to become, I started emails and phone calls with, actually, I talked to Dick Sharper right here in this office. And he says, contact Ryan. I explained to Dick what was going on. This was back in April, contact Ryan, which I sent Brian an official letter, an official letterhead, and explained all the costs and everything. Dick Sharper got a copy of that letter. Supposedly the two of them meet and met. I've had two or three emails back and forth to Ryan's office. I've heard absolutely nothing back. And I say Dick hasn't called me back. But if we go with the program the way it's set up this year, the village's share is going to be forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents. The town share is going to be seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Refresh my memory too. What's our committed budget? What's our, what did we budget for by twenty-five?
We went high this year. We put forty-five thousand in. But you've got to stop and think, that's not strictly summer rack because that also helps pay for the utilities and things at the fairgrounds for when we do the skating program, comes out of that forty-five thousand. And this year alone, when we got the bill, electric rates were up. And normally, we pay between seventy-five and seventy-eight hundred dollars a year. And this year, it was well over, I think it was eleven-four, something like that. It took a wicked jump. So normally, like last year, our actual summer rack, this was when we split the other ten thousand, fifty-fifty with the town. Our actual villages cost for summer rack last year was thirty-one thousand, four seventy-five. And that's where I was trying to hold it this year when I was trying to get the town to split the difference with us. That was the only time, you know, walk fifteen, they would go up fifteen. So that's why I'm putting it out to you. My thought is if we can't get extra funding, we should just take a year off and figure out how we're going to do this. But I'm thinking, you, you, you're on the double. I would think Dan's got to know now. I don't think he can wait until June to answer, because he's got to hire people.
Correct. Now, there's a meeting tonight. I won't be, I've got a sectional baseball game, so I won't be in the meeting. I mean, I can certainly talk. What have you expressed, have you laid that out to him or he's, he understands that?
I have talked with him. That's why I was, I talked again this morning. I came in early this morning and talked with Bob again just to make sure that where the town was at. And that's why I'm coming, that's where they're at.
I've got some thoughts, but I don't, I mean, not anything that's a secret. I just don't want to commit to, or, you know, have other people go back to stuff. So yeah, I think we need to think hard about it and maybe have a pow-wow with everybody or...
I do know Mike Young has put in for Grant, but if he gets it, that's only going to be maybe three thousand dollars at the most.
Well, is it better to trim some of this or just do away with it, you know?
Right. I think it's too, the program, and I'm biased, but I don't care whether I'm on the double play board or not. I'm a product of this, this program as a kid that's been going on. We've had some years off, I get that, with the COVID stuff, and we've had years with the...
Well, we took, yeah, that year COVID, we took off.
Yeah, but it's, it's a very valuable, you're right, it's a babysitting service. So my fear is, what happens if that babysitting service goes away?
Parents might have to step up and play it, you know?
Well, I don't think when they're supposed, we're giving them, yeah, I get what you're saying.
No, I just mean there's other, another childcare out there.
Well, the question was whether you can turn that budget at all. Can you turn it all by reducing the time that it's...
I mean, we could go back...
Times.
We could go back.
We could relax the week or something like that, you know what I mean? Still have the program, just last week, but that's not my call.
I mean, I can get ahold of Dan and ask him if we go back to the four-week program, whatever.
My guess is the last couple of years.
Well, not my opinion. Better than nothing, my opinion.
Correct, correct.
My personal opinion, whether it matters or not, I agree that the RAC program is a great program. It's here in Laubel. Everybody in Lewis County uses it, as it shows from the data. The county needs to step up and help out. They keep telling everyone how much money they have. They can spend money for patrol, for, or security for snowmobile. They can spend money for snort run. They can spend money for that, but they can't give back to the community of Laubel for people in Lewis County for a RAC program. That's pretty sad. They can spend all this money on a DMV building, help out with a hospital here and there, but they can't give back to the community.
Plus, they gave all the snowmobile clubs a thousand dollars. And the snowmobile clubs get money from registrations, so it's not like they want.
That's just my opinion.
They're just, I realize they, they want tourism, but they need to take care of the local people who are here, their taxes, paying the proper taxes.
I'm sure he could, I'm sure he would. I think he would, he would give us some CPR if he needed less support than that. And I would echo what Paul said. I know, like you say, it's, this is not an ideal idea, but if the county does not, and again, I'm not trying to blame anybody for it, but at that point in time, then maybe we should say, hey, you're citing a thing, where is your residents when you're citing to get up? And it's free for the town and the village residents? And it's not if you're outside, if there's no county share. That's, I, I'm not saying we've got to go to that level. I'm just echoing what he said, thinking as he's talking about it, and that's, but your assessment's a hundred percent acceptable.
Well, the county ought to answer some questions then, instead of not answer emails or phone calls and stuff.
And I believe Joe was telling me this morning, or somebody was, is it Beaver Falls that has the RAC program? And they, they actually charge ten dollars, or one of those communities, they actually charge ten dollars a kid or something. Then, I hate to say it, but you have to pay the cost of that.
Because the town and village are actually paying for it.
Correct.
I'm not proud of that.
Yeah. I hate to do that, or I hate us to do that.
No, I mean, if you're calling it a babysitting service, I think it's pretty cheap babysitting for ten bucks.
But I think you, you can call it a babysitting service, but the kids are still, whether it's a babysitting service or not, the kids are still learning. I mean, they're with groups of people, they're learning stuff there. And that's, us as a board, we should look at that as, you know, a positive. The whole community should look at that as a positive.
If the whole county's involved, it should be...
Correct.
Well, my mind is, we, we really can't decide anything today, so you get something definite, you know what I mean? As a board, if we can't vote on anything, so you get something definite, what are we going to do, right?
But I just wanted everybody to know where we stand on that. Meanwhile, I can check with Dan and see what a price for a four-week program would be. But I think we've definitely got to make a decision.
Or, you know, talk about what they said, you know? If you charge people from out of, out of the town or village a small amount, I don't think there's much to act either, you know what I mean?
But yeah, and Joe's original point is correct though. Whatever we decide, whatever, probably have the heart that time to say, we have an answer from the county. The town's already spoken, I get that. And then at that point in time, we move forward and figure out what we're going to do. Shorten it, charge, a little of both. I, you know, I hate to say eliminate, but it's got to be one of the options, but I don't, it's the last option in my mind.
But I know Bob's reached out and he's hoping to hear it here in the next day or two, other legislators at the county also. So my thought is, I'll get a, check with Dan and see what a four-week program would be, and, but I think on the June fifteenth, board meeting, we definitely got to make a decision. Whether we're going to have it or not. But I can't see the...
What is the timeframe, July, March?
It's July, it was, it's scheduled to start July fifth, whatever that to, it's, I think July fourth is a Monday, so it's Tuesday. It's, we got basically a week and then, and it could be, I mean, if, worst case scenario, if we shorten that, they could be starting to start later. And then it gives everybody room to breathe and hire and, but he's right. I mean, I hate to see, I, you know, I'm assuming he's got, if he's bringing back, I don't know what he's doing for staff, but if he's bringing back his staff. But if I'm a college kid and I'm nineteen years old, I want to know whether I'm working in summer, I'll go to Westone. So there's a lot of, yeah, the timeframe is getting tight.
Well, that's what he was looking for, mom's staff or whatever.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, maybe the program, you know, I can dig into it a little bit more and see what we can...
All right, we'll, we'll go that route then, I'll move on. So then keep everybody, I threw this one in there on you, Paul. Disposition surplus property. Down there at the sewer plant, we, in renovations there, we got a nice large overhead door that's maybe, might be five years old, that we're not going to use, we have no use for it. And I would like the board's approval to put that on, declare it surplus, and then that's so we can auction it off and get something out of it before it gets damaged. I know the town just got rid of three that were worshipped in this plant, they got pretty good luck for them this time here, because everybody's building.
They started two new ones and they're cheap.
You agree with that, right?
Yes.
Yep. I'd rather, basically, a large overhead door, this position.
At our lower building, we actually, with the renovations, we took out the overhead door and actually put a man door in because we don't need the overhead door, so. And I have no use for it anywhere else.
So you make a motion to put that up, that door up for surplus, auction.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fountain. What's going on there is the old fountain is down at the sewer plant, the one that's broke. The historical society, Jonathan Miller's president of the historical society, asked if the historical society could have that. So I felt I couldn't just give it to them. The board may need to make a decision if they, we have no use for it other than scrap. And if they want to, maybe someday, possibly restore it, I have no problems.
What's the name of it?
It's a cast iron.
Cast iron.
Yeah. Yeah, we, when we, when the fountain broke, we actually got estimates on repair and it was smarter for us to purchase a new one. So it's, it's pretty expensive to, some chassis pieces and whatnot, so.
Even if we gave it to somebody, are they going to come back on us all like, you believe something's broken?
No, no, they know, they know it's broken.
Right, but I mean...
Yeah. Their plan is to, right now, Jonathan said, we'll put it in storage, and he says, hopefully maybe we can get a grant to re...
Okay.
I'm thinking maybe, would like to maybe restore it someday and then install it someplace, but, but I just felt we needed to put something in our minutes and how we disposed of it some down future, if anybody wants to know. So I just, you know, if you guys will, I just need a motion to let the, this Lewis County Historical Society have the old fountain.
I'll make that motion along, most things are attached on it there.
No.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The last thing I'll keep you here is Juneteenth holiday. I don't know how many people heard about that. Turns out, it's a federal holiday now.
It's a federal holiday.
It's going to start taking place, uh...
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth, but they'll be observing it on June twentieth. And my question to you is, it's not at anybody's contract as a legal holiday for the village. But do we want to go ahead and let them observe it? I believe the post office and all those places are going to be closed that particular day. I mean, it's something that could be, should be added probably in our contract down the road, but I mean, with this just coming up.
And our, our contract is, contract negotiations for DPW starts this year, right?
Yep. So it's, but like the office staff and things, they have no contracts, and they just normally get the holidays, so.
Can you all get a vote on this?
I was not asked about it. Because I know the kids are out of school and stuff too, so when you get asked, maybe...
I really don't have a opinion on it. I know this county's not...
Is the county closed or?
No.
Oh, that's...
Not, I'll say, I'm sure the state side probably will, you know, the state side probably will observe it. I don't know. I mean, and it's not in our contract either, because it made it in the contract, so.
I've not been in contract negotiations, I'm not sure how stuff reads, but like...
I'm assuming that the next contract will, will read like a...
I think they get a voting holiday already, DPW does, I think.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I don't have an issue with it.
Office doesn't, I think they do though, because they work certain...
I'm looking for suggestions, I guess, we should all...
I don't think anybody, other than you, would...
Your standard would be voting holiday or not doing it at all? That's totally up to you guys.
I think it should be a question, maybe to the, to the village attorney, you know what I'm saying? Should, should it be in the contract? Should it be a contracted holiday, not just, I don't know.
I, I think that's, we can, we can think, we, we have a meeting on the fifteenth, so we can make a final decision on that day.
Well, I think the way it is, is we'll, we'll decide, or you guys will decide this year, and then next year, their contract will be up, so I'm sure it'll be in there if it's a...
You're not one of the two, I guess.
Yeah, so...
That's kind of the way I look at it, because that's kind of what happened to us, you know what I mean? Although they didn't connect the last fall, I think the legislation was there, but they didn't put it in the contract.
We'll try and get a little more information and, and make a final decision on the fifteenth and that.
Couple of other things, Joe, I know, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
We talked last, at the last meeting about this community solar aggregate, that, you know, this woman possibly would come here and, you know, before the border. I talked to her, her name is Alexa Lamb, from that Jules organization. She said the presentation would be like twenty minutes, so, and of course, you know, if you had any questions, if you're not, does that something want to entertain at a regular meeting? Or do we want to do something special? Or she just meets with the board? Or certain members of the board, even without a quorum or whatever? What's your thoughts on that?
Do they have any thoughts, how they'd like to do it?
I know she has like a whole PowerPoint presentation that she can do, yeah. She did it for Fort Lyden too. And she gives like the whole packet of everything and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's a good presentation. I believe, I, I think I've already seen it, when she did it for the county, I think it was at the JCC Center. I think it was a good presentation and...
Does it involve the village a lot?
Oh, yeah. Or it can't, put it that way. You have to have a certain percentage of the people in the village sign up for it.
Correct.
And then...
And then you get like a discount based on how many people sign up at the...
Right. And then you, if you reach that point, however many people are up hills, you get like fifty dollars per household or something, the village against actually.
Yeah, I don't know, we didn't look into it, because, I mean, Fort Lyden is a lot smaller and has a lot of other infrastructure problems, but...
Yeah, with the percentage, yeah, but, certain percentage. I think it's, you know, it's worth at least part of the board looking.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you think she'd want to do that?
She can do it in June, or if that's too close, she can do it in July, you know what I mean? Or like I said, she could meet with just a couple of us, and you would basically have a quorum there and have like a special committee on her or something like that to report that, you can do it that way. She met in front of your full board then?
I mean, I had nothing with her coming before the full board, especially going to twenty, thirty minutes.
She said twenty minutes if there's questions. If I could get her to do it June or July, however you want to do it. And I don't know if we want to set it up so she's right off the bat, gets done with it, you know what I mean, or at the end, or I don't know.
Why don't we, why don't we try set up, does anybody have any problem with a July meeting? I mean, or is, I know we're going to be doing...
I know we're going to ask some stuff.
I think we're going to be fairly busy with, because of the construction projects in June, there might be more stuff coming up. I don't, so I'm thinking maybe July, middle of July.
Yeah, I'll get, with you on the agenda and have it on the agenda. Like you said, we'll decide next month where we want to put her then, I guess, probably.
I would put her at the very beginning.
Yeah, I think that's what we did too, this way she didn't, because I think after ours, she went to another meeting too. So I think she tried to like schedule more and send more.
Okay. I like where we have the orders of dead.
Right, okay. I'll get back to her then. One other thing, electric car charges. I think that's something we should look at.
We talked about once before about possibly like over the stretch of time here.
Chuck and I have spoke about it. There's a, there's a whole list of contractors you can contact. And then basically, the research I've done, with the grant money and stuff like that, if you cause the village very little or maybe even nothing, and you could actually get some, the village could actually get some income, I guess, you know, because they're activating with credit cards, when people travel and stuff like that, so you put a surcharge at top of that, a few percent or whatever, and then the village gets that, that money too. So I would like to move forward with that, or me and Chuck would move forward.
Yeah, I, I've been scouting around as I get time, and I was at Destiny a couple months ago, and they've got like four charging stations right as you, right at the edge of the parking lot. And this one gal was backing in right at, at the time, and it was kind of a nice looking car. And so I cautioned her that I'm, I'm not trying to hustle or any, you know, I just, I said, can I watch you hook up to this thing and see how it works? Well, the poor girl, it was a rental car, and the units they've got there called Charge Point, that's the name of the company that does it. You have to have the app on your phone for Charge Point to communicate with the unit before, what even worse, the poor girl couldn't even hook it up, and, and she didn't realize it. But, but it was kind of comical, because another guy was backing in at the same time, and he explained some of the stuff about it. And he said, the Thousand Islands Welcome Center by the, by the bridge up there's got a unit? Well, he pulled in there, his car was almost out of juice, pulled in there, and the unit wasn't working at the time, so he had to call a tow truck to get towed to a charging unit. So, you know, this, this stuff's pretty interesting once you get into a little bit.
And all these car companies, I mean, by, what, thirty, thirty-five or whatever?
Twenty, thirty's going to be...
Yeah, four, thirty, they're, they're saying all electric, so I think that's something we should...
Well, they were talking about two months ago.
Yeah, I think that's something we should look into. I mean, behind the common, like, you go by veterans park, I don't know, we got to figure out where we want it first.
The project, the South List, or that school project, and they're, well, new park, one of the parks I've gone to, now that I go into for a ballgame, you've got a charging station. I don't know if it's the only one or not, but there's one there.
The town's got a couple up the DSS too, but, but they're the slow chargers. These here, you know, you charge your car in half an hour, so somebody coming through to stop, charge your car, and stop and have lunch or whatever.
Well, there's three different rate chargers, basically. There's one that'll take all night at your house, then you can hook up two forty, that'll charge faster, but now they got one for four eighty, and, and one is a D, DC charger that, that'll charge it up like half an hour. But each one, it, money rate is a different charge too, so, you know...
I thought the fastest one was like four hours, but...
Well, it's half hour for the fastest one.
I think something just came through, one of the emails too, about grants being available for it.
That was, uh, Megan.
Okay, yeah. I was gonna say, I think.
She's the one that set the contractor that's out too.
Yeah.
So you and Chuck will look into that?
Mostly Chuck, me and Chuck. No, I, I got quite a bit of info actually.
And I got some saved on my phone that I can check in.
Okay, anything else? Then I guess that brings us down to the German.
I'll make the motion. If there's one other business, go to German.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.